Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Colin and Julie. Hey, guys.
Hi, everyone.
How you doing, everybody?
We're really excited to have you guys here today. We've got a lot of really, oops, sorry, video. Hello. We've got a lot of really fun stuff to share. I was trying to actually click on my other fields here in Zoom, so I could see who's joining us. As you're coming in, say hello, go into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. And I'm also really curious, say me in the chat if you are not using Get Oiling yet, because if you're curious about Get Oiling, it's a really good call to be on. And of course, I believe the majority of us, I see a lot of very familiar names. Hello, guys. Really, really great to have you guys here today. We are going to be talking about December content, specifically the content that we've created for you, but we're also going to be talking about our Black Friday specials that we have launched early, right? Next week, especially if you are here in the US, you celebrate. Maybe you're traveling, maybe you're cooking and hosting. It's a very busy time for a lot of us, and I wanted to make sure that you've got your eyes on this stuff before it goes away, in particular, for one thing, that we'll be talking about here in just a moment. So, hey, welcome, Northern Minnesota, Phoenix, Myrtle Beach, Vermont, New Jersey, Philly, Virginia, Oklahoma. Welcome, guys. Really, really glad to have you here today. So, we're going to pop out a video, get into some slides I've prepared for you. We've got a lot to share with you today, and we'll come back and join you here on video here in just a bit. Again, really, really thrilled to have you. This is our favorite time of week where we get together with brand partners from all over the world who use Get Oiling and talk about ways that we can grow. And these are particularly exciting calls, because this year, Get Oiling has started offering done-for-you content that you could plug in to your system and educate your people on autopilot every week of the year. And it takes you five to maybe 15 minutes to adjust and make your own and get plugged in and ready to send. So, we're going to get into all of that here today. I also have a member submitted question that pertains to how we use this content. So, we're going to talk about kind of what this looks like to use this and move people from capturing their information all the way through to their purchasing. All right. So, today, we're going to first talk about these Black Friday deals. We're going to talk about this so that you guys can take action on this, so that you can invite your friends to take action on this as well. There's a lot of really great opportunity here for you to grow your Young Living business and secure the tools that you need to really go into 2026 intentionally with everything that you need to grow. We'll talk about how the Tip Tuesday funnel works, that's our done-for-you content, and how we deliver it. We'll talk about how to apply and manage these resources we're providing to you each month, how to use the system to nurture your leads and engage your customers. And of course, as always, we'll get into life-helping Q and A. So, if you have questions today, please do add those to the Q and A here on the call. We've got a lot of folks here today, and the chat can get really busy, and I just want to make sure that we don't miss anything that you're asking. You've also got Julie and Colin here able to ask, sorry, answer questions as they come in as well. If you're watching this as a replay, we'd love for you to come and join us. We're live every week. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession. We're here on Thursdays at noon, US Eastern Time. Now, next week, because it is a holiday here in the US, we're going to be celebrating that. So, we will be providing you with a recorded call next week. We, however, will not be live. If you're celebrating Thanksgiving, we hope that you have a wonderful time and, of course, know that we are so grateful to be a part of your journey in helping to spread Gary's mission and getting oils into every home. Now, if you would like to join us on a future live call and you'd like to get help, or if you'd like to submit a question like a user did this week, you can go to GetOiling.com/websitereview. This is totally free and a fantastic opportunity for you to learn more, how to get more out of your system, and to move past any roadblocks that you may face along the way. And if you would like to, for someone to just remove the obstacles completely and do the work for you, that's also an option. GetOiling.com/conceiers, where you can go to learn more about those services. All right. So, first, let's talk real quick about Black Friday. All right. So, we've launched, just as Young Living has, we've launched our Black Friday deals a week early so that you can spend this time with your family next week relaxing and doing the things that you ought to be doing. So, first things first, if you are a customer, this is the best time of year to tell your friends about Get Oiling. So, we have this thing called three-for-three, where you can get up to three one-on-one calls with our experts, including yours truly. This is a $600 value. These are calls that we can use to strategize in your business, to get hands-on with your tech or your design. All of these are options for you. And all you need to do to have these calls, this is not like some kind of random giveaway. You get these if you do this. Okay? So, what you do is you refer three friends this month during this promo using your link to your referral link, and we'll show you guys here in just a bit where you can find that if you're not familiar. Refer three friends in November, and if they are still around in January, you're going to get those three 30-minute calls with our experts. All right? And another thing that is back for this year, we launched this for the first time at convention. Momentum is live now for you to sign up for. This is an exclusive cohort. You're a part of a small group that meets regularly, and you get hands-on support to get you integrated into using Get Oiling, so that you can sign up one to four new customers every week consistently and keep them for life. This is not some high-concept promise. This is a very real reality that can happen if you build momentum with the right systems, and we go through those exactly in Momentum. If you're in Momentum, by the way, say so in the chat and let folks know what you love about it. If you're here on the call, what you get in Momentum is live support, easy-to-use tools, and systems that actually work to grow your business. So, this is a complete blueprint for brand partners, where you get to plug into proven systems that attract leads, that help you to have better conversations, and keep your customers coming back. And you'll learn how to keep growing even when life gets busy, because that really is the thing that typically stalls us out, right? It's not necessarily burnout. It's just life happens, right? This might not be what you do here with Young Living. It might not be the center of your universe, right? And even if it is your main income source, which it is, I know for a lot of folks, you know, you still have life. Life happens and seasons change, and if you have the right things in place, your business doesn't have to suffer when you need to take a step back, right? And at the end of the day, the most important thing that you need to know is that Momentum is designed for you at any plan level in Get Oiling to get the most out of your Get Oiling tools. So, if you're using a seed plan, we've got you covered. And of course, if you've got a large team, we've got you covered there as well. So, with Momentum, we're developing the systems that you need and the support that you might feel like you've been missing. Now, obviously, with Get Oiling, we have these calls that we do every week. Pam does multiple live calls per week where you can work in smaller groups. There's all kinds of great opportunity to dig deeper and even to get the human hand that you need. You guys know Colin and Julie, if you've ever written in to our inbox, Greg answers questions there as well, and we've got more team that do this too. But this is dedicated specifically to the strategies that you're using in your business. This is having a coach, right? This is having accountability. This is making sure that you're following the right steps as you're implementing in your business, which isn't necessarily always what you're doing with your Get Oiling, right? It's what you're doing, generally speaking, as a brand partner, of course, using Get Oiling in the process. So, what we're going to do here, if you haven't done this before, is we're going to have a live half-day setup workshop. We're going to make sure everything that you need is in place in Get Oiling for you to move forward, right? So, this isn't watch a course, hope you get it done, and then try to keep up later. We move together to get everything done. And again, if you've been through this in Momentum, then you know this. This is truly, we don't move forward until everybody has what they need. So, there is a dedicated half-day live setup workshop for you. By the way, if you are here, if you weren't on our call this Tuesday, and you are someone who has been in Momentum already and you don't know this, we will have an exclusive alumni-only half-day workshop that is dedicated to going deeper into the strategies that you've set up with Momentum. So, that's a really exciting thing. Make sure you check our replay in the Momentum group if you are already using it. So, you've got on-demand curriculum. This doesn't change. We've got monthly live coaching calls to make sure that you are doing what you need to be doing, that you are implementing, and that you've got the support to do it. And really critically, we all work different schedules. We all have different needs. We offer multiple times a week, drop-in office hours. If you need help with something, the help is there. All you got to do is show up, right? All right. So, we have early bird pricing for Momentum. This ends on Sunday. This is going to give you the half-day intensive. We could easily charge $500 for something like this. The curriculum, we could charge $297 for monthly live coaching, $197. That would, I mean, that's honestly a steal if we charged that much for it. Pop-in office hours, we could charge that much for it as well. Tools, templates, et cetera. All of this stuff is done for you, easy to plug into your system, and you've got all of the support you could ever want to help make sure that you're getting it done. And guys, it's $97. This $97 price point will end on Sunday, this Sunday. So, that is, let me pull that up here real quick. That is the 23rd. So, midnight Central US time on Sunday is when we are closing off this price. The price will go up. It'll still be a great deal when the price goes up, but you know, given all of the support that we're offering, it's just important that you know that the doors will close when we have enough people in this. So, if it's something that you want to do, grab it at this price point. If you are an alumni, you're going to see a different price when you're in your back office. We've got a special price for you. This is for the entirety of the program. So, this is 90 days, right? We're going to have our first workshops starting in December, and you're going to have support going into the new year, into February. So, this is something that we're going to be offering quarterly. And so, this is 90 days of support. All right. So, we do have a link. Guys, if you don't mind, team, if you could pop, Colin already did there in the chat. You can head over to, there's a page for Momentum there that you can check out, as well as another page for all of our Black Friday specials. So, the seats are limited, guys. Look for that link in your dashboard. And if you are a team leader and you're interested in bringing your team on board, using Get Oiling, implementing these steps, get in touch with me, ashley@getoiling.com. If you've got a team that you want to go through this, I want you to reach out to me so that we can work something out and help you get your team into this. We also have, from our concierge team, Brand Launch Essentials is back. This is your personalized website done for you. You get your custom website. It's over 50% off. You can start connecting in a way that's uniquely you. We're going to get three one-on-one calls with our designers. You're going to create your brand guideline, your logo, your Fabicon, and develop the copy for your website. And then, your website will be set up using our five essential website templates. Again, this is something that even if we charged $1,000 for it, it would be a deal compared to anywhere else you could go on the internet to have something like this done, and the team is charging just $450 for this. So, if you don't have your own personalized website set up with Get Oiling yet, this is a fantastic opportunity to get that done, and you can book this for just $450 right now. Now, if you're new to Get Oiling, you can get started at any plan level, and you can get our entire library of content that helps you grow your business, right? So, we've got our weekly wellness content, which I'm going to be showing to you guys for the month of December here in just a moment. We've got the group's masterclass that helps you to plan the process and then execute the process of moving your groups off of Facebook and into your own website, where you get to have your kitchen table, where you decide what's said, and you decide how it's organized, and your people can come to a dedicated, non-distracting space to learn and to communicate. We've got the Brand My Business workshop, which is a great DIY option for you if you're interested in really building out your website in a way that is very you. This takes the guesswork out of it. It's got templates, workbooks, all of this. You can get this done in a weekend and have your whole website set up. Again, these are included, guys. And if you're already a Get Oiling customer, understand, these are available to you in the Success Academy whenever you want them, right? So, this is actually something that we just give to you. We don't want to sell you software and then just leave you hanging, not knowing what you can do with it or what to do next. Marketing Mastery, email marketing mastery workshop is dedicated to email marketing, systems to support how you communicate with your customers and brand partners, smart strategies to help you stay in their inbox. And if you are someone who's interested in growing a list, this is going to show you how to get started. Marketing Mastery is a four-system, like sort of main systems that grow your business that you can learn. Again, this is something you can go through at your own pace, how to run those systems to grow your business. It's a complete blueprint from day one to royal crown diamond. I've had Crown Diamonds tell me that if they had access to this blueprint when they first started building and living, that they would have gotten there 10 times faster. So, this is, again, it's free to you as a member of our community, so you can grow your business like a master marketer. The Lead Generation Workshop, if you guys haven't set up your own funnel yet, this is available to you there as well. It's beginner-friendly. You can start growing your list, starting real conversations step by step with a funnel that is yours. So, if you ever want to move beyond what we're doing here with the done-for-you weekly wellness content, you want to maybe start offering something that's unique to you, this is a great place to start. All right? So, if you're getting started at basic or higher monthly, you can get the word out with free two-way texting for three months. You can get three months of unlimited vaults and classes. You can get 200 extra marketing credits per month for life. And of course, we have this all-in-one platform and full training library, and it's only a dollar for your first month. If you are ready to commit and go all in with more serious growth and savings, if you go for an annual plan here, you get a month of Get Oiling for free, a year of two-way texting, a year of unlimited vaults and classes, 1,000 extra marketing credits per month for the life of your plan. You get your own domain name. You get, of course, those incredible trainings and courses and resources that we've provided for you. And with an annual plan, you do have a 30-day money-back guarantee. If you're getting started at annual premium or higher, you can get a one-on-one tech consult with us as well, or a strategy consult with us if you're getting started at pro or diamond annual, if you're doing that during this special. All right? All right. So, thank you, guys. I know we've a little bit to kind of speed run through there here at the top. And thank you for everyone who is in Momentum right now, who is leaving your comments there. Definitely scroll through. If you're considering Momentum, look through the chat here and see what's being said, because there is definitely a lot here for you to learn and, of course, be supported in that process. And if you have, if you have questions, feel free to send those in as well, or put them into the Q and A. If you want, like, if you have clarifying questions about that, and you're looking to make sure you're making the right decisions, put that into the Q and A. We'll talk about that here in a bit on the call. Now, thank you for everyone for sticking around here. Let's talk about our December content and really why we ought to be putting content like this out there in the first place. Now, most leads, and this is really important, and I do want to kind of call out here as well, because we did have Anna Lee wrote in to us, asking for us to kind of share, like, what it looks like to use the weekly wellness tips and what it looks like to take someone from signing up for them all the way through to them purchasing. And this is kind of really, I think, a timely question in terms of how this works to get new customers. If we want to get new customers, it takes more than just putting oils in front of them once. It takes more than getting them to a class once, right? Most people are not going to be ready to make a decision, particularly to make a decision to commit right away. They need ongoing education. They need ongoing exposure, right? So, what we need for leads is to stay continually present, stay top of mind. Now, for customers, we need guidance on our wellness journey, right? Like, we don't want to throw our people into the deep end, but we do want to get them curious with little pieces of information that can help them decide what to explore further, because there is a whole world of things they can explore with Young Living. And so, this funnel that we're using here, this weekly wellness tips funnel, provides us an answer to both of these questions, right? How can we make sure that our leads are stayed in touch with, right? So that they can eventually become customers? And how can we make sure that our customers are engaged in such a way that they can consistently be more curious and start using more product, right? So, these consistent touch points build trust and engagement over time. And the Young Living products that we're putting in here, because we are using this to gradually lightly, gently introduce Young Living products to people, we're doing this within the context of wellness education, right? So, we're not saying, hey, I'm going to teach you about thieves today. Because for somebody who doesn't already love thieves, that doesn't matter. They don't care. But if we say, hey, it's November, it's getting colder, we all know what happens this time of year. I'm going to talk to you about how you can take this. I'm going to show you how you can take a couple of simple steps each day, swapping out things that you're already using that will help you support your immune system so that you move through this season sniffle-free, right? That is way more interesting to a lead and to a customer as well, if they're not using thieves yet, right? So, we know thieves is amazing, and here are all the reasons why. But if we want someone to listen to us, we can't just say, open this email about thieves. We have to say, hey, do you want to not get the sniffles this year? Let's talk about some things that we can do to improve our wellness, right? And then, in context, when we say, by the way, here's thieves, then they're listening. Does that make sense? Let me, give me a yes in the chat if that makes sense to you, right? All right. So, here's how it works. A funnel begins with a landing page, and we offer this landing page. This is done for you. You don't have to do anything to it. What we're doing is we are, and there's a little bit more to it here, but we're offering weekly wellness tips, where they're going to learn a simple, seasonally appropriate step that they can take to support their wellness, and we will recommend a product that helps them to implement that tip every week, right? That's the promise, and that's what this does. So, we get their name, their email, maybe their phone as well, if you want to. And we promise to send them weekly wellness tips to their inbox. Again, this can be for leads, and this can be for customers. And to Anna Lee's question, the link to this landing page can be in the menu of your website. It can be in the About section of your socials also on your website. You could put this in your link in bio on your Instagram. You could put this in the description below your YouTube videos, the show notes of your podcast, wherever you show up, you could put this link. And you could say everywhere you show up, hey, by the way, I offer weekly wellness tips. Click the link below, and you can get access to them, right? So, that's the gist. And also, when you sign up new customers, you can say, hey, I send out tips, seasonally appropriate tips every week. Do you want to get them? They talk about how to use product. Your customers sign up here, two birds, one stone, right? All right. So, a lead opts into the landing page, and then they get a pop-up message that sets expectations, right? This is a confirmation, just basically saying, hey, you're signed up. You're going to get these on Tuesday. They're going to be brief. They're going to get practical wellness advice, tips you can use right away, and spotlights on natural products. And these are easy to implement and things that you can, you know, kind of personalize for yourself. We can be in touch, right? And, you know, you can click here and get in touch with me as well, right? There's a little link there. Now, this is, again, it's already written for you. You don't have to do anything with this. It's done. No immediate email is sent, because we're promising the emails are going to come out on Tuesdays. So, whatever the next Tuesday is, they're going to get the next email. And then, the last of each, week of each month, you are going to swap out on this landing page, the campaign, right? And the campaign is what I'm giving you today, which is a series of messages that are coded to go out every Tuesday in December. Okay? So, the contacts who opted in on that landing page, they're going to be able to keep getting their Tuesday tips, and I'll show you how you can make sure that's the case. And then, anyone who opts in will start getting their tips the following Tuesday, right? So, we're just building this list of people who have said yes to getting tips. Okay? Now, let's talk about how we manage this. The last week of every month. So, right now, it's November. So, you're going to be performing these steps next week, right? After Tuesday. So, say like the 26th, the 27th, the 28th, or even, you know, 29th, 30th, or the 1st of December, so long as you've got this stuff done before the first Tuesday in December, which is the second. All right. So, the last week of every month, here's what we're going to do. We are going to swap out our new campaign on the landing page for the next month's campaign. So, again, after December 2nd, or sorry, after, sorry, forgive me, don't. After Tuesday, the 25th of November, so on the 26th of November or later, you're going to swap out and add in December on that landing page. And then, and this is something you could do today, you could filter your contacts for weekly wellness tips. So, those are the people who said yes before, and we're going to go ahead and apply December to them, and they're not going to start receiving anything until December 2nd. Okay? So, let's talk about what's in these emails, and I'll walk you through exactly what it looks like in the system and how you can make modifications to them. So, the first week of December is going to go out on the 2nd of December. We are going to talk about staying energized during darker, colder days. So, here, we'll talk about how winter months affect mood and energy levels. We'll talk about natural ways to maintain motivation and vitality. And the products we'll feature to do so are super vitamin D to support healthy vitamin D levels when we're not getting enough sun, and orange essential oil, which is just so good to brighten the mood. And it's a little seasonal still, and yeah, I love orange in these months of the year. I think it's really good to kind of brighten the mood up. All right. The second week of December, we will be talking about, the 9th of December, we'll be talking about how to strengthen immunity in colder months with simple daily practices to stay well. And after that tip, we will talk about thieves vitality for immune defense and longevity soft gels for antioxidant support. So, we're getting a good mix here of different types of product, right? We're not just talking about diffusing. We're talking about supplements, right? We're talking about vitality as well. In the third week of December, this will go out on the 16th. We talk about winter hydration and skin protection, how cold weather affects hydration and skin health, keeping skin nourished and glowing through winter. And our featured products here are rose ointment for deep hydration and mer essential oil for winter skincare. On the 23rd of December, week four, we'll talk about reflecting and resetting for the new year. Here, we can talk about how to set wellness intentions for the coming year, how small shifts can carry your momentum into January with your wellness practices. And our featured products are frankincense for reflection and mindfulness, and highest potential for maybe their goal-setting sessions that they might be using. Week five goes out on the 30th of December. That's that final Tuesday of the year. We're going to talk about restoring balance after holiday indulgence. So, here, we talk about how to support digestion, energy, and immune function after celebrations, and then gentle ways to get back on track if you fell off track over the holiday celebrations. And our featured products here are Ningxia Red for post-holiday recovery and daily prebiotic fiber for gentle cleansing, right? So, there's five weeks in December, or five Tuesdays, rather, in December, and we are sending out one email per week for this purpose. Okay? So, best practices for success here are to take that landing page and share it regularly to bring in new leads. Talk about it on your social. Have it in your link in bio. Have it everywhere that you would put a link. I would argue it's better to have this link out there in a lot of cases than it is to have your homepage website link. And the reason why is anybody could go visit your homepage, but that doesn't give them a clear reason to put in their name and email and stay on your list, right? So, if we are saying, hey, I offer tips, get them here, that's going to be more compelling than, hey, come browse this place where I talk about myself, right? Another place you could use this is maybe with a QR code going to this landing page. You could put this up at a vendor table. This could be something that you have people sign themselves up for at your vendor table using the landing page in kiosk mode. You could even do the paper forms and say, sign up for my weekly tips, and you could put them into your system and tag them, right? So, lots of different ways that you can share this. And then, just remember as well, this can be a valuable part of your customer onboarding process, depending on how you're working with your customers, right? So, let your customers know if they are already on board. Let them know about these tips. Many will sign up even after their first purchase. But if you have someone who is getting started, who is interested, like, they are showing interest in wellness topics beyond just the reason they signed up, then you could go ahead and sign a new customer up for these as well. And then, you're going to engage with the people who respond to the pop-up question about their wellness goals, because that's that confirmation message after they put in their name and email. And then, you're going to stay consistent, right? Just plug in here. We're going to remind you every month when it's time to make these changes. Your audience is going to expect these, love these, appreciate these on a weekly basis, if you're staying consistent with them. And then, always make sure that your links are correct, right? So, the built-in links are there to make sure that you are receiving credit for any purchases where someone isn't already one of your customers. And if you are outside of the US market, there are, there is going to be one important thing that you need to do to make a swap here, and I'm going to be going over what that looks like with you here in just a moment. So, here's what we're going to do next. We want to claim and personalize our landing page if we haven't done so already. So, if you've never used our weekly wellness tips, you are going to want to grab that first. And if you're already using our weekly wellness tips, we are going to grab this month's campaign. All right? So, if you have that landing page, obviously, we're going to be sharing that landing page link with our leads and customers. And then, we're going to plan to swap out our campaign after the last Tuesday of each month. So, again, here, that campaign swap out on the landing page, everyone here is going to do this after the 25th of November, which is a Tuesday. So, the 26th, Wednesday, or after, is when you're going to just go in and make that quick swap. Now, today, we're going to start editing the campaign. So, if you are someone who is outside of the US market, or you want to focus the content maybe more specifically around a specific holiday, right? Like, there are a lot of different holidays that folks, you know, participate in at different times of the year, or you may be, you know, on the other side of the planet with, you know, going into warmer weather, where you might want to adjust this as well, right? So, there are, you know, several reasons that you might want to change this. You've got a little over a week to get that done, and then you can get all of that plugged in. So, attend these upcoming calls, so you can get support where you need it. And the more consistently you share that landing page and keep things updated, the more leads and customers you'll nurture for the long term. All right. So, let me go first, and I'm going to pop right over here to All right. So let me go first and I'm going to pop right over here to our blog post for, uh, that we released today. This would have gone out via email to you guys. And just real quick, just in case, uh, you are at all unclear what it looks like to find this system and its resources. I want you to go over here inside of Get Oiling to the Success Academy. And when we click here and you go to online resources and courses, right here is weekly wellness content. So let's open that up and you can see here that this, uh, this is the, the resource bundle for the, uh, landing page. So you can grab that here. And then whatever, if we go over here to the blog, to our, our most recent weekly wellness tips, this actually just searches, uh, our blog categories. And you can see here is December's, there is November's going back as well. And by the way, speaking of, if you are, uh, in the Southern hemisphere, uh, we do have, uh, you know, basically a whole year's worth or enough seasons worth of content to where you could kind of maybe pick the opposite season of the year, uh, to find a campaign and just, you know, change the name of it. Right? So maybe it's, uh, our December is what like your May perhaps in terms of weather. So, or June, uh, so you, you know, you may want to swap that out. But anyway, uh, these, uh, blog posts that we release, uh, are where we're going to be kind of walking through all of the steps of, uh, of claiming these and understanding what's in them and then moving into, uh, getting them set up in your system. So first things first, we have the landing page bundle, uh, which is, sorry, a little further, um, up the page here. Now I already have this in the system, so you do want to claim this if you don't have this in place already. Uh, but let me go over here to landing pages and show you what this looks like. I'm going to type in tips to find it. There it is. There we go. So this is the editor version of the page. So this is what you see and, uh, it looks like what they'll see. But here's where you can make modifications. You can change what it says, you can swap out the images. We can go into settings here, you can see what is being said and, um, you know, you see where they go. This is going to send them to your homepage by default. We have this tag, weekly wellness tips. This is how we find our people, uh, in our system, uh, that, uh, that have said yes to this already. And then right now you can see that we've got the November version of this campaign attached right here. Now I'm going to keep this here because if I have anyone sign up, uh, through, um, you know, next week, then I want them to get the final Tuesday of November, right? So there is going to be Tuesday, the 25th, uh, there is still another message that needs, needs to be sent as we speak here today on the 20th. Right? Uh, so that's why we need to come back here next week and swap this out for December. Makes sense? And Camelia, it is not too late to send out, uh, November tips, uh, because your campaign is date based. Your, your folks will get the one, excuse me, they'll get the one for the 25th and, and you'll be good to go. So they'll, they'll only get the 25th because it's a date based campaign. All right. Uh, so that is, uh, the landing page, the, the front door to the funnel. And, uh, if we view this, you can actually see what they'll see. If they say, I want tips, they come down here, they put in their name, email, their phone, if you want to use it, got a little my story in about here. When they sign up, they get a pop up. All right. Uh, Donna says, I don't think my tip Tuesday signups are getting the confirmation pop up. How can I check to see? The way that you're going to check to see is if you go to your landing page here and you go to settings. Show this message after registration will need to be checked. And then you want to make sure that you've got your, your information here. So, um, they are getting that pop up if this box is checked. All right. So the next thing that we need to do is, uh, is to come down here and actually get the December resource bundle. And here we have two options, you're going to want to pick one of these. And we're going to grant permission, uh, to, uh, to claim it. And we're going to claim one of these. So we're going to uncheck one of these. I'm going to show you the block format version of this. There is also a plain text version. Now, if you're unfamiliar, or maybe it's been a while since you've attended one of our calls or used the system, that's totally fine. But we have a beautiful, amazing, uh, visual style email builder now. And that's what I call block format where you can kind of drag and drop your blocks. So I'm going to keep that one here and not claim the plain text one. And I'm going to click claim. And then I can come over here and see it. And, uh, we can go ahead and preview what's in these messages where we've got our weekly wellness tips here. We're offering a tip. We're telling them how to use it and we're actually linking to product and talking about why we love it for that purpose. We're asking a question to get them to engage and telling them to hit reply. And then we're signing off. All right. Uh, so we have five of these. Now, if you want to brand these, uh, to your own brand, it's actually very easy to do. But before we do that, I'm going to go ahead and click edit email. And, uh, first address a really important thing. So if you are in another market, you are going to want to make sure that you address the links here. Because these are currently going, if I go and, um, and view this link. Go edit the link here. If I go back, you can see that this is US English. So if you are US, uh, Spanish, or if you are Canada French or Canada English, right? You're going to want to make sure that the link that you're using is correct. So that means we need to go to Young Living and find the correct link. And then we're going to use this feature and get oiling called, I call it the leaf link, or we kind of colloquially call it the, the leaf link. It's this one right here that says insert young living link with my member number. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to Young Living. And I am going to go to the, uh, Canadian English market. Oh, nope. That's not what I wanted to do. All right. I'm going to go to Canada, English. There we go. And the product that I need to swap out here is vitamin D. There it is. So I'm going to click on that. I'm going to find, I'm going to grab the link up here and you can see it's different, right? That E N C A up there at the top. So I'm going to come back over here. I'm going to click the leaf link. I'm going to paste that in right here. And it's going to give me this really long link. You see that? It's not cute. That's fine. I need to unlink it so I can just copy it. I'm going to delete it. And then I'm going to come up here and paste it in this field right here. So now the product link is correct to my market. Now what that leaf link did is it put your sponsor and enroller number that we have in, in your Get Oiling system into the link. So when someone purchases this, they will then go to purchase it from you directly. Right? So again, if you're outside of the US market, you are going to want to take these steps. Uh, and if you want to make this quicker and easier for you, we list out here on the blog post, every single product that we recommend. So if you know that you need to replace something such as a vitality oil, um, or how we talk about it, right? Cause I know vitality isn't something that is in every market. Or if there's a product that, um, you'd prefer to use instead, you can actually plan ahead before you go in to edit your messages and say, you know what? Instead of daily prebiotic fiber, I want to recommend something different. Or because I don't have, um, vitality, I'm just going to talk about thieves oil, right? So, uh, you're going to want to make sure that you go in and just grab the young living links for your market, for the products that are being recommended. And there's only ever going to be two, uh, per email. So there's just 10 of these. And then we can easily go and, uh, and make those, um, make those swaps out in here. Okay? So that's what you're going to want to do for each of these emails, uh, to swap out those links. If you need to obviously swap out, uh, maybe if you're in Australia, we say boost your energy this summer, right? Because it's December. So, um, you're going to want to make those modifications. Now, if you want this to look like you and your brand, uh, make sure that you do have your colors set up in Get Oiling. Uh, and oh, by the way, uh, if you want to, uh, to actually modify this and make it your own. You can come over here to our email templates and I have a Canva bundle, uh, for you. If you click weekly wellness tips, there's a Canva template here where if you want to modify these images. If you want to modify these images that I'm using in the sections, all of these are here. And you can go in and change the colors on these to your own, uh, colors for your brand. You can change the font, you can change the images, et cetera. And then you can pop those in and easily, uh, make yourself a new, uh, you know, a, a new email here that reflects your branding. Right? So if I want to say, let me find a, a tip Tuesday, here we go. I'm going to drop this guy in here and delete this one. I'm going to go ahead and change my background color. This one, rather the message body background color. I'm going to change that to this blue color here. Right? And then I can simply go through and swap these out as well. Right? So it's actually pretty quick and easy to go through and make those changes. Uh, I have already saved some sections with these images. So I'm going to look for my today's tip in that blue color, which I've already, uh, created before. So I can swap that out and delete the other one. And from there I can just build these out. It probably, you know, would take about 20 minutes, I would, I would say, uh, to make those swaps. And it's pretty, pretty easy, uh, to, uh, to do. All right. Uh, I've, and essentially the, the final thing that we want to do, once we've got our, um, emails edited to our liking, this campaign is ready to go. We're going to do two things. First thing is I'm going to go and, uh, visit my dashboard. Where I'm going to go to, uh, to send an email and it's going to be a campaign. The campaign is going to be December, weekly wellness tips. Let me see. Here we go. Tip Tuesday, December 2025 block format. There it is. And I'm going to search for my weekly wellness tips. Tag. I'm going to send that to those folks. Good to go. And I am also going to go next week, remember, it has to be after next Tuesday. I will go over here to the landing page. That's called tip Tuesday. And then I'm going to go here to settings to campaign. And find that December. Campaign. And once I've got that, I'm good to go. Right? Once I save that, now the next time somebody comes and they put their name and email in on this page, uh, they will get the December tips. Again, that's the reason why you want to, that step, last step I just showed you, make sure you do that next week. So that you are, uh, getting the information out to people that need it, uh, next week. Right? So, uh, we don't want to, um, uh, interrupt the November, uh, flow that you've got with people, uh, by, uh, having them skip, uh, the final week of November. Okay. Let me see. Can the plain text be printed off to share with those who do not use, uh, social media? Hmm. It's a good question. Honestly, I think, sure you could. But Camelia, I know, uh, what a font of knowledge you are. So I would think that, well, I mean, don't, do they text? You could text them this, that's also an option, uh, if they're not using email. Or if these are folks that you only meet with in person, uh, then maybe you could put the, put this information into a little flyer. You could take the, actually just take the copy from the blog posts that we have for, for this week with these tips. Put it into your favorite AI and say, turn this into a one page PDF where I can share this with my, uh, you know, share this with my friends who aren't, uh, using the digital stuff, right? So you, you could certainly do that if you wanted to. Can you do the other country edit for just one person? So if this is someone who is already a customer, right? If you've got someone, uh, you know, that you're serving who is outside of this market, when they click any of those links, they're going to need to log into their Young Living account anyway. So where we're talking about our people who were already serving, it's a little less consequential because they already have a Young Living account. Right? So, um, what this is really important for is for the, the, the bulk of people who are purchasing, uh, from you, brand new, uh, whatever market they are in. That's where you're going to want to look at that. And look, at the end of the day, most people are not going to get started, uh, with Young Living because of an email you sent them. They're not going to just go and place their first order necessarily. Maybe they do, sometimes they do. But what people are going to see, I think most often is enough for them to want to have a conversation with you. Right? And that's our goal anyway, uh, because that's our fail safe. Young Living is not an affiliate marketing company. Links don't always work, no matter how well we set them up ourselves. Right? Uh, so our best course of action is to always do everything we can to make sure that we're interacting in a direct way. And let people know that they can interact with us directly so that we can serve them better. Right? So, uh, what I would really be more concerned about is, is making sure that for these emails that you're sending out, in particular to your leads, that you are focusing on engaging with them. Because we aren't just going to throw links out and get sales. And if we do, if we do get sales off of these links, they are most likely to be people who buy once and don't buy again. And that's not necessarily what we want. But we do want to show up and say, hey, here's something that can make your life better right now, this time of year. And by the way, I have stuff that can help you with that. Right? That is really the primary thing that we're accomplishing with this, is letting people know that you not only have information, but that you have resources. And when they're ready, you're the one to come to. That's really what all of this repetition does. For the most part, right? Like, are there instances where people will go purchase? Yes, totally. They're more likely to be customers that do that than not. But we want to have conversations with people anyway. Okay. Started editing my first tip and was able to change the colors, but I was only able to add one of the sections with my colors. I've gone out and saved and gone back in again, and still no luck. I'm going to bring you out here in just a moment. It says it either doesn't work at all right now, or it's just spinning on loading image. Okay. We can troubleshoot that here in just a moment. Okay. Yeah. So Camelia, yeah, if there are folks who don't use phones, uh, then I would maybe turn your November tips into a class and get together with them. However, it is that you get together with them, or if you want to turn that into a piece of paper that you can mail out to them, uh, or, or hand to them in person. Okay. So for prospects, Donna, um, if you know where this person is, I would just, I mean, especially if you know that it's just one, I, I would, you know, just let them know, you know, hey, there's a way. But also to be fair, they're going to go to the US site and that's going to have your, uh, your information. If they have trouble maybe switching to their market, I mean, let, let's just go back to the Young Living website here for a second. Cause if somebody sends you, uh, a link. Right here. This is, you know, Canadian English. We can actually go, if I'm a lead over here. And if I go to, um, let's, I'll go to Indonesian English. Up here, it's not carrying over my information. So there isn't a way to do this for everyone. And this is really the importance of trying to build a relationship with your list, with the people on it. Because this is, is what is going to allow those people to understand, hey, you want to make sure when you make this purchase, you're making it through me because here's why. Right? So yeah, like there's, there's not really, again, and, and this is because Young Living is not built to be an affiliate marketing company. Like say Amazon or, um, any other affiliate marketing company where, where like that shift from one market to another doesn't lose the fact that you were the referrer. Right? There's only so much we can do with automations and clicks, uh, in, in this, uh, field of work that, that we are in. All right. Lisa says, is there another step to, step to take so that our people keep getting the tips, uh, get them the following month? Yeah, that was that step that I took, Lisa, where I filtered my contacts for weekly wellness tips for that tag. And then I applied the next month's campaign to them. All right. Jolene says, I'm editing my campaign and notice the last one's on the 29th day, but that doesn't mean, okay. Yeah, let's go double check. Let's go back into this campaign here real quick. If you are seeing any issues and again, you know, we can, we can do our tech well, but that doesn't always necessarily mean that it's perfect. Let me find my email. All right. I'm just going to go into. Where did I find that? I claimed it somewhere. Okay. I'm just going to X out of this and show you guys. Let me go back to my campaigns. You do want to make sure. I'm going to put in 2025 December. All right. So this is going to start sending on December 1st. And so that means that people are, that, that first message you're going to see delivers on the second, delivers on the ninth, 16th, 23rd and 30th. Right? So this is how it should look. If for whatever reason, something was clicked or it didn't move over correctly into your account, you do want to make sure it says on a specific date. And that date is December 1st, because when it is, your folks are going to get these messages only on these dates. So if somebody signs up on your landing page on December 7th, they're never going to see this first message, but they will see the following ones. Right? If somebody signs up for your list on the 17th, they're not going to see these, but they will see these. Right? So do make sure that you have this here. This is how it should be sending to you. If for whatever reason, it does not arrive to you this way, you want to make sure that it says this, on a specific date, December 1st is that specific date. December 1st is that specific date. Okay. Did you not see the? Oh, sorry, here, let me come back over here. This is what I was referring to. So right here, campaign starts on a specific date, December 1st. Okay? That's what it needs to say, because if you look at this real quick, it starts on the 1st and that means that day one is the 2nd. Right? And then it moves forward through there. So if yours doesn't look like this, make sure it does before you apply it. Okay? All right, Jennifer, I'm going to show you what that looks like here in just a second, for sure. And Allison, I'll bring you out and we can look through yours together. Adrian, when I attempt to edit a text box that highlights the whole sentence, I can add test on the end by placing my cursor at the end of a sentence. However, I'm curious how you're able to edit winter to summer a few minutes ago. Okay. All right, so we can explore that. So what I did here is I went to Edit. And you do have to click on, so all of these blocks, you have to, you know, you'll, you'll be dragging them if you, if you try to like select something. If I try to double-click. So what I did was I just opened it up, so now you can see this whole editor field. And I would type in summer here. All right. Let me see. Yeah, if it's highlighting the whole sentence, it may be that you don't actually have the editor open. So just make sure you can see all of these controls. All right. And then the Saved Sections, you're going to see everything that you have saved over here that you've saved previously. And by the way, if you want to save something for future use, it's this guy right here. Add this block to my Saved Sections. And if you want to get rid of some that you've saved before, you're going to come over here from your dashboard, down to the Email Templates in your Content Library, click Sections, and you'll see everything that you've saved. And then you can just delete them, the, the ones that you don't want. Okay. And, and I want to kind of put a pin in the question that was brought to me by Anna Lee, who is not able to be on the call today, but had this question. Sort of, you know, what does it look like to share and to have people move from opting in to becoming a customer? Right? So how all of these things play in together? So Anna Lee, this is your homepage, which you've done a lovely job, including like great backstory here. And this is a built-in site, guys. If you have Get Oiling, you get started with us. This is built-in. She didn't have to build this. All she had to do was share her story and a photo of herself. And she's added some more interesting stuff up here. She's put in a logo as well, which is great. So what I would do is either under the Learn menu, I actually think this would be a good place to put it. I would link your Weekly Wellness Tips in this menu, maybe up at the top. I would also maybe add a Weekly Wellness Tips invitation here inside of this section, if this is what you're using as a homepage. And, and that would allow people who visit your website to find a clearer path to getting onto that list. Right? But like I mentioned before, the majority of the time, that landing page needs to be the first thing that people interact with, not this page. Right? Because that landing page is going to do more for you. It's going to capture their name and their email. Because we need to be able to not just show up in front of them once with something compelling, but we need their contact information so that we can go and connect with them over and over again. Right? Oh, you are here. Okay, cool. Hi. Here, let me allow you to come out here and, and chat. Because it said in your, in your application for the call today that you might not be able to join us. So, hey, yeah, I, I hope that some of this was clarifying to you, but please do go ahead and, you know, ask away if you have more questions.
Well, my first question would be, how do I get back on the page, the Zoom call to make it big? It's gone small and I can't find a way out of, out of where I'm at.
Okay. Well, depending on your device, are you on a computer?
I'm on an iPad.
Okay. So I would pull up on the screen so that you can see all of the windows. So from the bottom of the screen, drag your, your finger or your thumb up, then you can see all of the windows that you have.
It made what I had really tiny again.
I don't usually use Zoom on an iPad, so it's a little hard for me to be able to see what you're seeing and tell you what to do, unfortunately. I'm sorry. But yeah, if you can, if you can find the Zoom window and open that one, or there might be like a picture-in-picture thing that you can click to open it up a little larger.
Well, right now, I see you in a little box and I see my screen. I mean, my homepage, so.
Oh, yeah, so that's, yeah, that's what you should see. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I pulled yours up because you had asked the question. Yeah.
Okay, so you said to put the link to invite the, to the Weekly Wellness Tips in with my profile.
Yeah, the Learn Menu, yeah. Mm-hmm. If you can put that in, in the Learn Menu, you could also put it into the My Story and Photo here as well. Oh, you did! You already did, it's right there. You did do that. Look at that.
Well, probably, oh, I can't think of the name in a moment. Pam, probably Pam helped me do that.
I believe it. Yeah, no, you've got that in the right place. So you just want to make sure that this landing page that you have here, which is the one we've been talking about here today, that you're just sharing this widely. And you've got the, you've, you've got it right there. It's fantastic. You could put it into your menu also, fine. You know, I, I think, you know, if somebody lands here, they're going to keep scrolling and they're going to be interested in reading what you put here. And this is the first thing that you're telling them to do after they land here. So this is, this is the best possible place for this to be on your website.
Okay.
Yep. And then, you know, in terms of what it looks like to move them from putting their name and email there and then becoming a customer, is really going to have to do with that person. And I, I wouldn't treat this passively, right? So like, the, as people start interacting with your website, you know, taking you up on these wellness tips, you'll get notifications from Get Oiling that this is happening. And where you see a name that you don't recognize, look them up on social. See if they're a friend of a friend. Where there's someone that you know is not a customer of yours, reach out to them. Right? If somebody, like, we don't have to just rely on what we put in place for automation. You know, unless we're getting 50 people a day signing up for stuff on our website. And if you are, talk to me, because we need to bring you out to train everybody. But unless you've got.
Hold, hold on a minute. You're skipping way ahead. So I built a website that, and it's still sitting out in the desert. Nobody knows it's there. How do they find me?
Oh, well, you, you show up, you show up where they are. So, yeah.
I guess I don't understand what that means.
Yeah, so this is actually something that we get into in really great detail in Momentum, if you want to join us in that. But, but essentially what you want to do, so your, your website is, is sort of the core hub for anybody who wants to know more about you and what you do. And typically, the way people find your website is we are linking to specific pages on the website, like that landing page. Right? Things that are contextually relevant to them. So this means that you are, maybe you're creating YouTube videos and links to these things are in the description. You're posting on social and this is in your link in bio, or maybe this is a link that you're talking about in a post that you make on social. You podcast and it's in the show notes. Like, you've basically, like, to be able to be found with your website, you need to show up. Right? And there are places and ways for you to show up with more permanence. Blogging is a great part of this that you can do with your Get Oiling system. And that actually can allow you over time to become found by people from anywhere in the world that are searching for things. Right? So there's a lot of ways to get traffic to your website. But the primary thing we have to do is, is actually put content out. I recommend putting out a blog post a week. You could do once a month. And certainly showing up on your social media platforms of choice, where you know your people are spending time on a consistent basis. And making it clear to those people, hey, by the way, we can come over here and talk about this. Right? Hey, by the way, I've got a free thing for you. Hey, by the way, there's this thing over here. And that's, that, that's kind of how we get people to interact with our website.
Yes, that's the answer to the advertising. You know, I'm, I'm really good on the computer. I'm, I'm way ahead of a lot of people my age. But there's this gap in the way life used to be, with a store on a street and an advertisement or a billboard or a commercial on a commu, you know, a commercial on TV. And there was this blank spot in my knowledge of how to sign me. So that, yeah, and I didn't expect details. I just wanted that. And you did. You, you covered the, the idea. So.
Yeah. So it's a, just, and I, I love that you brought that up, because any of us who worked at all in, in business or promotion marketing, pre-internet, and aging myself here, that is also me. Marketing went from a push information in front of people so that there is awareness to a pull people toward you, which is more psychological and it's more nuanced. And it's slower, I think, in some ways. But it builds more security, because what we do in poll marketing or attraction marketing is, is we're playing on themes of identity, how people perceive themselves, how they want to associate with others and what that looks like. And so people can now, in ways that they never could have before, decide to only buy their shirts from people that they're ideologically aligned with. Like, who would have imagined that 25 years ago? But that's the world that we live in now. And so we get to kind of play into that sort of attention economy by showing up in social spaces, which is typically social media platforms, it's also content, to where we can say, hey, if you're this, I'm your person. And by the way, I got all this cool stuff over here if you want to come. And, and, and for a while, they'll just interact with you where they found you in the first place. But eventually, you'll convince them to come over to your home, which is your website, or, you know, get your free thing on your landing page so that you can be in their inbox. And so it's, yeah, it's, it's different from, I'm going to pay to put my face or my logo or whatever out there so that people know to call me, right? Or look me up in the Yellow Pages or whatever. Now, we are really just kind of showing up in a, in a more subtle way, signaling that we're where they want to go. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I, I think where I'm at then is, just to be clear, is that my funnel system, so I've got the foundation now, I've got a website, but there's some more pieces to my funnel system. Some, you know, like these landing pages and stuff. And, and the funnel system is like, if they sign up here, it sends them there to buy something. But there's pieces in my funnel that are missing. And that's kind of what I'm needing to work on. And then I can focus on the media and the, and the advertising and the, the blogging and the whatever. But right now, I think where I'm at is finish this funnel. And it's, and it's evolving and it's changing and it's, you know, it's constantly being added to. I get that. But I need, I need, there's some missing pieces that need to be put in place right now.
I would say that one of the most important things that you should have in place, and this is, you know, everything we're talking about here right now is something that we go into great depth and you get a lot of support around with Momentum, if that's something that you want to do. But, but one of the things that I always recommend, and I, and I, this is one of the first steps we take in Momentum, is we get our Weekly Wellness Tips in place. But then we also have a, a consult that we offer. We want to provide a way for people who are interested right now to take advantage of a next step with us. Because that's really the best way to take someone from, I'm interested, to I'm making my first, first purchase. And it's not going to be something that's fully automated, successful. Right? Like, it's, we're, we're not going to say, here's your wish list, buy this $300 worth of product. Most people are not going to go to Young Living and spend $300 unless they've actually spoken to you. Right? And we want them to go in and spend $300, of course. But more importantly, we want them to, to spend and then understand that there is a benefit to doing this the Loyalty Rewards way, that there is a reason why they should commit to 90 days, because it's going to help solve their problems. So what we really want to do is start moving people toward a call with us, a discussion with us. And so if you want to create a, a booking opportunity for someone, and then maybe put that in the footer of your messages, so that every time somebody sees you're sending a tip, they also see you offer consults. And that, that to me is a completion. If you're trying to create a funnel that moves people from Lead to Young Living, that's really the only step that needs to happen next, is we're showing up consistently saying, here's the stuff that I offer. If you really want to solve the problems that you feel like you have, call me. Right? And then you provide that link to, to book a time with you. That's a complete Young Living funnel, in my opinion.
That puts the personal aspect back in, you know, the human connection back in, so.
That's right. And it's the fail-safe too, because again, those Young Living referral links, they don't always work. Right? They're not 100% of the time. So a complete Young Living funnel is capture a lead that we confirm that they're curious and interested about health products and topics. And then we say, get on a call with me. That's, that's the complete sign-up-a-customer funnel to me.
Okay. Yeah, guess where I'm calling in from today?
Ooh.
I'm in Canada.
Oh!
And I am in a little town called Redwater, which is north of Edmonton.
Okay.
So I'm sitting here in a pickup in the freezing frozen north. My feet are getting very cold, as my son just bought a old pickup from a guy for his business. So I'm along for the ride, but I had to bring my technology with me so I could participate in these things. I thought you'd find that interesting.
You know, I, I find that inspiring, actually, Anna Lee. So thank you. And, and, and we, we certainly all appreciate and honor that commitment that you've got.
Okay, well, I saw the part of your presentation. One of my questions was, where do I get the Weekly Wellness Tips and where do I put them? And I saw what you did about where to get them. I'm still kind of lost only where to put them. You know?
You mean, the, the, what you've, you, you, no, we covered that. You, you have that in your My Story and Photo. Like, that's the best place for you to have it.
No, that's not what I mean.
Oh, okay.
I have, I mean, the step of every month I have to go get them.
Yes.
And then there's somewhere I have to put them. That's what I'm missing.
Oh, the campaign. Yeah, that was what we showed when we took the campaign, edit it, of course, depending, like, if you need to. And then you search your contacts for the tag, Weekly Wellness Tips, for anybody who's signed up already. You apply the campaign to them. And then you go in, the last week of the month after Tuesday has passed, and you go into that landing page and you swap it out. So right now, if you followed these steps last month, it says November right now.
I missed November. I got it done for October. And it was just yesterday that I realized I had forgotten to do it. Why isn't this just automatic? Because of all the tweaking that has to be done for it?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. It, it is, it is something because we're serving folks that are all over the world, not just like here in the US where I'm able to write them for. Like, wi- without charging for them, like, this is what we're able to do, to, to make them included.
I guess I'll have to set up a one-on-one, because, you know, you went through that, but I'm kind of like, I don't know how to apply it to myself. What do I need to do? What changes do I need to make? So.
Are you US-based?
What?
Are you US-based? And that's why you're marketing? Yeah. So you don't need to make any changes to the campaign at all unless you want to. And so all you have to do is apply it to the people who are tagged Weekly Wellness Tips and swap out the existing campaign on that landing page with the December one, and you're good.
Okay. Well, that's the piece I'm missing, is without seeing where to do it, the apply it to those who are tagged. So, you know, that's a question in my head. How do I do that?
Yeah, so there's, there's two, there's two ways to do it. And we actually show with screenshots exactly how, how to do it in the blog post that went out to you guys via email today. So we actually walk through, if you want to actually see, like, the picture, it looks like this, now do this. Like, that is all there. And it's in every post when we release these Weekly Wellness Tips. And I can show you again real quick here.
I'm being interrupted here.
I'm sorry?
The guys are getting back in the pickup. I'm being interrupted.
Understood, okay.
You got that money pouch?
Okay.
So I've got to go now.
Okay, yeah, but for sure, feel free to set up a time with Pam. She could, obviously, it looks like she's, she's helped a great deal before and she can help again.
Is this what he's asking for? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Allison, real quick, tell me what's going on. We can get into this and, and get it worked out. You're having an issue with an image?
Yeah, so when I go into, do you want to go into it? I'll stay out of it if you're going into it. On to the December block format, the first wellness tip. I was able to start at the bottom, so when I downloaded it, it had all the Get Oiling, Get Oiling, sorry, my family keeps on dinghy me and I'm trying to ignore it. Get Oiling, sorry, my family keeps on dinghy me and I'm trying to ignore it.
No worries. All right, we're using the block format?
Yeah, click on that, and if you scroll to the bottom, it used, or not, I'm sorry, the first email, and then scroll to the bottom. See, I've been able to do the purple on the outside, and then at the bottom, it had the Get Oiling signature. I was able to delete that and put in that block.
Okay.
And then I started, I was able to do the four dots, whatever, for that purple dot, 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 all the way across on the right. And then, so I tried to scroll up. That's one I'm trying to change, and when I would click on this, Why We Love It, oh, I keep forgetting to go over there.
It's a different purple color, though, the one that you have saved. But yeah, yeah, go into your Save Sections and find the one. So you've done this before, and this actually makes it really easy, because if you've already done it, you just...
Well, what I do is I click on and I swap the picture. I guess I don't need to do that, but if you go to Why We Love It and you swap the picture...
Yeah, you could do that as well. That's certainly an option.
That's where I was having the issue, so if you, if you...
Yeah, just create a, yeah, there's, there's one there. So you can do that, but what I would do is, once you edit the section that you have, just save it so that you can come over here to your Save Sections and then just drag over the one that you've done.
So if I, how do I get rid of those other purple, wrong purple colors?
So, like, so these are the wrong purple, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, so I would go ahead and upload, make sure that you've got in Canva the photos that have this correct purple color. Upload them here, just like you were talking about, using this Replace Image here.
So go on the...
And then, and then click Add This Block to My Save Sections, and then it will show up over here.
Okay, so if, can you go to the Replace Photo and go to Browse real quick and then Sort by Weekly Wellness Images? So those are all the ones.
And they're all a different color, though. They're not this like...
Those are different?
Yeah, yeah, so you've got like this very bright purple in all of those images, and then you've got this sort of like aubergine color here. So if this darker purple is the one that you plan to use, you just want to make sure that all of the Canva images are created with that color. And then you can use the Swap Image here. And then, once you swap it, save the section. And then it would be over here, and you can go into your templates and delete these sections that are the wrong color.
So how do, how do I delete the sections?
Yeah, if you go to down here to your email templates, go to Sections, you can then delete them. And then, as you're adding the new ones with the correct purple color, you'll be able to see them here as you save them as Save Sections.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then, I have a calendar question, but I'll try to jump on your hours for that later.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got Momentum Office Hours at 11 o'clock tomorrow Eastern, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, thank you guys for sticking around. I hope that this was all very useful and helpful to you. If you want more hands-on help, especially where it pertains to the big picture topics of marketing, right? How do I get people to my website? How do I, you know, get all of these systems set up, that Complete Young Living funnel, including what it looks like to get someone signed up and signed up in a way that they stick around for life? Make sure you check out Momentum. The link is in your dashboard. We've got Brand Launch Essentials there as well. Very, just the reason why I want to talk about Momentum today is because the special pricing ends Sunday, right? So definitely grab this if it's something that you feel would be useful to you going into the new year, getting all of this set up so that you are building the business that you want in 2026. Thank you guys for sticking around. We'll be back week after next. Remember, no live call next week, but we will have a video for you. I hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving, if you are celebrating, and we so do appreciate you. We're grateful for you. We'll see you next time.